We'll start with roll call attendance, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Mayor DeVere?
Here.
I know Councilmember Cavanagh is in the building. I don't know about Councilmember Mylum.
Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag. Item number three is our Community Invocation. Tonight will be led by Darrell Taylor with Ten Mile Christian Church. If you will all join us in the Community Invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us. If you'll just pull that mic towards you, yes.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this great nation we live in and the many, many blessings you've given us throughout the years. But as the news media continues to remind us, we're in need of a great moral and spiritual overhaul to help our nation meet the many, many heartaches that we're facing today, Lord. We pray today for our leaders in our nation's capital, but also here in Meridian, praying for wisdom and courage in making the right decisions that impact Meridian as well as this great country of ours. Father, give us light and truth to guide us as we humbly seek your will in our lives, and it's in your son's precious name we pray. And amen.
Amen. Thank you. Item number four is Adoption of the Agenda.
And a mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
On the consent agenda, six B, the resolution number seventeen dash two oh four six. And item nine E has been asked to be continued, which we will handle when it comes to it. And the ordinance for nine E is seventeen, or the resolution is seventeen dash two oh four seven. With that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the agenda as stated. Mr. Byrd, can we put on there a proclamation under Community Items Presentations as under eight, before eight A?
Okay, eight A one.
I do have a proclamation to read, and I don't see it on here.
I didn't see it either.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As a matter of procedure here, it is listed on the agenda on the back table. However, the agenda in front of you with the added notes for your information does not have the proclamation listed.
And you listed it as ten B. Okay. If we can do it before the Mayor's Use Advisory Council?
Oh.
Okay.
Make a second agree.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item five, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have a few signups this evening. We had three individuals sign up wishing to speak about the Bear Creek Park Fire Station number six. The first on that list is Kimberly Hecht.
Mr. Clerk, can you maybe flip that around?
I can hold it too.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dr. Kimberly Hecht. My address is two four seven six South Bear Claw Way, Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four two.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you all for giving me an opportunity to say a few words this evening. I moved to Meridian about a year ago, and I searched all over the Treasure Valley for a house. And a real reason why we picked Meridian, and specifically South Meridian and the Bear Creek subdivision, was due to the Bear Creek Park. It really impacted our decision. My coworkers that I was moving here for my job all told me, move to southeast Boise. And I'm like, you know, I really want to move to Meridian. It seems like more of a family-friendly town, and there's this great subdivision with this great park. I just would like the city council, I understand you guys cannot comment on anything at this point, but I'd like you guys to consider three things moving forward. The first is I would like the city council to have public hearings regarding the fire station at Bear Creek Park, Fire Station number six. I would like there to be community meetings included with that so that you can hear the public opinion of myself and other people that this directly affects. Two, during those meetings, I would like the city council to address how this Bear Creek Park Fire Station is consistent with the deed to the land that was given to you by the subdivision stating that this would be used as a public park. To me, a fire station is not a public park. I don't think that you're going to allow the community of Bear Creek to come into the fire station anytime that they'd like to from dawn to dusk as you can in a public park. I'd also like a comment on the June city council meeting minutes that I was reading. It discusses unused land within the park. I would like you all to comment as to what land you feel is unused, and specifically speaking to the spring and summer, when there are literally hundreds of kids there playing sports in the unused portions of the park where they're setting up soccer nets and all of those things. I'd like you all to hold the meetings that I mentioned above prior to any action is taken on the land that's currently available on overland. And I haven't looked into it enough to know if that's all in your jurisdiction or in the fire district's jurisdiction, but I would like, before any action is taken on that land, such as selling it to a developer, making sure that you held these public meetings so you can hear opinions of how this is going to affect the Bear Creek residents and the residents of South Meridian, as there are not a whole lot of public parks in that area. That's all that I have for you. I really thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much for being here.
Next on the list was Brian Forney, again, Fire Station number six was the topic.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Brian Forney. I live at six forty-five West Kodiak Drive, Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four two.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for providing me some time to speak. Most of what I wanted to say was just covered. Thank you. I wanted to mention, as far as I'm aware, the residents of the neighborhood found out about this yesterday through an article in the Meridian Press. No one I've talked to knew about it before then, so were surprised. On social media, I think I want to inform you that so far the neighborhood is 100% against this proposal. I've been out in the park today talking to people, again, 100% against. I'd like to reiterate the need for council hearings, community meetings, and I guess process, because despite the fact that the land was characterized as unutilized, that land is already in use. It's a park. There is unutilized land nearby. It's unfortunate that the fire station land isn't what they would like it to be, but this land is already in use. It has a use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Shannon Gower, again, same topic.
Thank you, Shannon. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Shannon Gower, and my address is two two nine eight South Bear Claw Way, Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four two.
Thank you.
And really, they have both said similar things that I would like to say. I just found out about this as of today. I have only lived in my house a year as well, and I was excited to move into this area, having a park close by, and it's a very lovely neighborhood. And I've seen the sign that the fire station's going in on overland for years now, and I was surprised that it is going to potentially be in Bear Creek Park. And if you go through that area anytime in the evenings, especially in the summertime, it is a very heavily-used park. I worry about noise levels, having a fire station not close to my home, and I am concerned about that park being utilized for other things, a fire station. And it is, there's not a lot of parks in that area, so I think it's something that we really need to consider, and I would like to see some additional meetings to discuss it further.
Thank you for your testimony.
Did have one additional sign up, Kyle Enzler, whom I spoke with. He had some questions about an item that is on the agenda this evening. However, that item, the final plat modification, is not a public hearing, so Mr. Enzler may want to speak with the planning staff.
Just a question, is it too late for me to be able to add a comment to?
You need to say it on the record if you come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Chuck Van Damme. I live on six zero five West Christopher Street, bordering with our back right to the park. I won't repeat the same concerns, although I share all of them that have been expressed so far. Let me just add one or two other thoughts. One, I'm not sure that it is a wise idea to be placing a fire station right across the street from a middle school in a school, school zone. I don't know whether or not that's been considered, but that certainly is on my mind as we consider, you know, where such a station should be. I do want to add my concern to how this was communicated. This actually adds to, you know, a list of other concerns that I've had about how communications have been undertaken. This last year, I was very concerned when the water park was playing very loud music up until at least 10:30 at night. It actually went a little beyond that. And I know there were a number of residents that were very upset that called into the police. We discovered at some point that, yes, they had been granted a permit to, you know, play that late in the evening. It just strikes me that there does not seem to be adequate input on the part of, or opportunity for input on the part of residents, or sensitivity on the part of the city to the needs and desires of the community and the neighborhood. And this just seems to follow a little bit of that same pattern, which I would hope would be something that we could address. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes item five, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, maybe yourself or Mr. Nary might be, maybe somebody could fill us in kind of on the process where we're at with that and how that would go. Should, when does the final decision get made and all the different process to how the fire station's going to go?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would suggest, based on the comment, that maybe you schedule this for an item for discussion for your workshop next week so that you can then map out a communication plan or how you want to discuss that or provide that. I know the chief isn't here tonight, so I know some of that communication is planned. I don't know when it's planned. I know that was part of the article I read, but maybe we could put this on next week's agenda for further discussion, and then we could do what you're suggesting, Councilman Palmer, is create that calendar of events and when that would occur.
Yeah. No decisions have been made. The conversation has begun, and that's usually when it lands in the paper, and it seems like it's a done deal. It is not. So we will put it back on the workshop and also communicate it to those who have reached Okay? If there's nothing further, item six is our consent agenda.
And a mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
As stated earlier, item six B, the resolution number seventeen dash two oh four six. With that, I move we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion, Mr. Byrd.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment? The publicly noticed agenda that I spoke about earlier for the proclamation does have item six listed as the proclamation current.
I know, but that's not the one we took a motion on. So we'll do it right after this.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'll call roll. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, consent agenda, so I will move to the podium, and I believe that we have a couple of representatives to accept this proclamation. Very good. You must be Amanda. Okay? If you'll join me at the podium.
Thank you for joining us. I have an opportunity to read this proclamation, and then I'll hand it to you, Amanda, and if you would like to make a few remarks.
Okay.
Whereas five decades of research demonstrates a high quality of care provided by nurse practitioners who serve as trusted frontline providers of health care for patients. And whereas nurse practitioners diagnose, treat, and prescribe medications and other treatments to patients through a caring, patient-centered, holistic model of care. And whereas there are 234,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States, and in 1804 in Idaho, providing, or 1,804, since 1804, I'm sure, in Idaho, providing primary acute and specialty care to patients of all ages and walks of life. And whereas citizens of our state and nation have great trust in high-quality care nurse practitioners provide, resulting in over a billion patient visits annually to nurse practitioners across the country, me included. And whereas Meridian is proud to recognize and honor the service of nurse practitioners to our state, therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, hereby proclaim November 12th through the 18th as Nurse Practitioner Week in the city of Meridian, and in recognition of the countless contributions that nurse practitioners have made over the past half-century and will continue to make to the health and wellbeing of our citizens and our community and state. And we do have a number of nurse practitioners here in the Treasure Valley. We have educational programs that specifically train them up, and we are proud to have you here this evening with us.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Madam Mayor, and I'm very appreciative. Idaho was the very first state to authorize full practice authority, and now we have 22 states and Washington, D.C. that also offer that, and very thankful to work here in the great state of Idaho. I worked for St. Alphonsus as an internal medicine practitioner for the last nine years, and very thankful for their acceptance of us into their organization, and it continues to grow year after year, not only providing primary care, specialty care, but also holding leadership positions within the organization. So I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, our next item is the Mayor's Use Advisory Council for your monthly update. Welcome, Colin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today with me, I have Nick Hobson, who is our Meridian Ambassador for MIAC. And so, Nick, if you want to say a few things about what you do in MIAC. Does this one work?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm Nick Hobson. Like I said, I'm a Meridian High School Ambassador. So what I do, I communicate from MIAC to the high school. I'm pretty much the bridge. And so what I do, I talk to the principal, the student council, and I try to give the information from MIAC to the school. So we have events together, we communicate trying to improve the lives of our students, provide leadership opportunities, and community service hours for NHS and for the students as a whole. It's a, I love doing it, and I love getting to know the kids and to improve the schools any way I can. And I bring the school information to MIAC, so then if Meridian has a problem, then I can communicate to the other ambassadors, and we all work together as MIAC to improve the schools.
And Nick, I guess I would just add kind of something that was added at the safety summit, is you're kind of that accountability piece to the plan that you put together as a school to address some of the issues that were identified and developed at the summit, correct?
Yes.
Very good.
Madam Mayor, how do I turn this screen on so I can see what slide is up? Oh, sweet.
You are now staff.
Sweet. So to go over, one of the events that we just had was Tac put on activity at Farmstead, where the first 60 people to sign up got in free, and so we had just a moment just to socialize with all the students from MIAC and just bond with them and show, hey, like, let's just come together and just have some fun with each other and socialize and talk and just grow with each other and get to know one another from different schools like Renaissance and Mountain View. So these are a couple pictures from just the activity and all of us just getting together. And then another one that we did, as you know, Renee did trunk or treat, and that was an absolutely amazing turnout, if any of you got, I know I saw a couple of you guys there, and so it was just beautiful just to see how many people from the community got together. And MIAC's purpose in this was to volunteer and serve the whole time going out, and MIAC had a booth for lost children, and we had a couple MIAC students who went out and were in charge of different parts of trunk or treat, leading cars and trunks to where they want them to go, so that we could just help any parents or children that were needing to know anything that was going on. Another thing is we've had an average of 90 students at our MIAC events, and so every other Monday at MIAC, we've been having social get-togethers where we have icebreakers, getting to know the kids, and afterwards we go and meet at Slice to spend time with each other. Just our main focus this year is to just be connected, not be separated from MIACers who come in from different schools, but to show that, hey, we're on the same page as you. We want to be hanging out with you guys, and we want to get to know you as well. And then one of the future events that we have coming up is Rake Up Meridian. So what we do is we go out and rake up houses for people who are unable to, and the main focus is just first off to serve the community and just grow with each other. That's it. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Colin. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Colin, can you give a brief update on the status of participatory budgeting?
Yes. So right now, we're in the process, I believe, seven packets were accepted, and so we're at that process where now they have to create a presentation for us, and we're going to vote on them in the upcoming month.
Madam Mayor?
So on?
Calendar's accelerated?
Yes. So the, there will be a briefing at our next MIAC meeting, and for December 13th, they will have poster boards and have kind of a rotating presentation. We'll break the MIAC members into groups, and they'll rotate through each of the different projects. They did have a little bit of a more robust application this year. Out of the nine that were submitted, there are seven that are moving forward, and the vote will be taken after the presentations by ballot, and so those will be narrowed down to the top three that will roll forward into January for the final presentations and vote.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Anything further? Thank you for joining us, Colin and Nick. We appreciate you being here. And Jody, of course. Okay, item nine, under Action Items, amended onto the agenda is item nine A. I don't know who's taking that. Mr. Clerk?
I certainly can, Madam Mayor. We had an application for, an alcohol license for the vault at the corner of Idaho and Second Street. They have their state, their county, but we found out through that application process that it falls within 300 feet of the Methodist Church, almost directly across the street. So because it's within 300 feet of a place of worship, it requires action by this council to approve their application. I don't know if Mr. Nary has anything addition to add to that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you said it perfectly. That's the only reason it's on there, because of the proximity.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I've read the packet right. It's a beer and wine application request only, not liquor.
That's correct. It's beer and wine.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Nary, Mr. Clerk, was there any objection from that church that falls within that range?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we haven't, we don't provide notice to any of the churches on these issues. We usually just add it to the agenda, so we haven't provided them any direct notice.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Palmer?
So action is required by us because it's within 300 feet, but we didn't ask them what they thought?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, you had other ones on there, the same, the same ones earlier. We had the Hop House, same issue. We don't, we don't provide individual notice to anyone within it. The state statute simply says any liquor or beer or wine license issued within 300 feet of a church or a school are required to be approved by the board directly, not by a licensing officer. So it doesn't have any noticing requirements in the code or in our code to provide to either a school or to a church.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
And with the last one, I had asked the same question, you know, if they'd had any objection, and someone had spoken to them, and they had said that they had no objection. And so I'm just curious if they have an objection, understanding it's probably not, considering that's tends to be the case, but like at least to hear from them since it's in code. It's because of them, we're going to have to, we have to approve it, and so I'd like to at least hear what they have to say.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Little Roberts?
Um, it's my understanding that the vault has been an event center for quite a while. I've been at several events where alcohol's been served, and I've not heard, if anybody can correct me, any complaints regarding private parties where alcohol has been served. So I would think that this would kind of be in line to continue on and let them serve their own beer and wine. their own beer and wine.
I, I think that the practice has been, it hasn't been necessarily a public hearing, it's just by our, our practice, it's not a decision at staff level, it's a decision at the city council level. The Hop House, they reached out because it was a new use, and in this case, we have two other drinking establishments on that block, and so it was not something that was Liquor is sold in that area. So, it, it hasn't been standard practice for that. If you want to have that as a step, certainly this council can send that direction, but in the past, it has just been, because it's not a staff-level decision, it's a council level decision, that, that has been the protocol.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move that we approve the alcohol license within 300 foot for the vault.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
As a subsidy, I move we continue item 9A for one week, to give us a chance to ask them if they have an opinion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item till next week during our workshop. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion failed. The motion that I'll ask you to weigh in on is a roll call vote to approve the alcohol license for the vault. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
All ayes, I'm sorry, the ayes have it. Sorry, Mr. Palmer. I, I think it's, it would be an important step that, just as part of that process, that the church that is within the 300 feet are reached out to, and even in follow-up to this, just to reach out and let them know.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor, as an administrative step, we can do that.
Thank you. Item 9B is final plat for H 2017-0131. I will ask for staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe that file number belonged to Rockbury Subdivision Final Plat application, they have requested continuance to the November 21st hearing to resolve some concerns that ACHD and ITD have with the approved ride-in, ride-out access.
Council, any concerns about continuing this till November 21st?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move we continue H 2017-0131 till November 24th, 2017.
I have a motion and a second to continue item 9B to November 21st. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
9C is a final plat modification on H 2017-0136. I will ask for staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. This request is for a final plat modification, the site consists of 10.32 acres of land, it's owned R8 and R15, located at 2975 and 3001 North Meridian Road. Little history on this site, back in 2016, this property was annexed and zoned, preliminary platted for 29 single-family residential building lots, 10 multifamily lots, and six common lots, and a conditional use permit for a 48-unit multifamily development was approved. The final plat application was approved earlier this year, but the plat is yet to be recorded. A condition of approval of the final plat requires the applicant, excuse me, the plat to be recorded prior to issuance of any building permits. The applicant is requesting a modification to this condition to allow building permits to be issued prior to recordation of the plat on the multifamily portion of the development only. The plat is required to be recorded prior to issuance of any certificates of occupancies being issued. The modification will allow the applicant to get started on construction on the multifamily portion of the development while the plat goes through the recording process. The applicant is requesting the following site-specific conditions to be revised. Site-specific condition number 10 currently reads, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall record a final plat for the single-family portion of the development. Prior to issuance of, and staff is recommending this language be added, building permits for the multifamily portion of the development, the developer shall complete the following prerequisite items. First, the domestic water system shall be installed, tested, and activated, so that fire hydrants are available during construction. Second, the sanitary sewer system shall be installed and tested. And third, at a minimum, a compacted gravel road base shall be in place that will support the weight of a fire apparatus, 75,000 pounds. And a new condition is added, that the applicant should record the final plat prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancies for the multifamily dwellings. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed modification for the staff report.
So, what has been the holdup on the final plat?
Madam Mayor, council, I don't believe there's been any holdup necessarily, but they, it will take a while to go through the process and get routed for signatures and get recorded, and the applicant just wishes to be allowed to be able to pull building permits and get started with construction, with the understanding that prior to issuance of certificate occupancy, that plat would be recorded. Multifamily, you can, you can build more than one structure on a, on a parcel or property, so that's what this would be.
So, minimal risk?
Yes.
To zero?
Yeah.
And Mr. Burton.
This is the, perhaps maybe another rare exception, if the multifamily component justifies it to what staff has counseled otherwise is a, perhaps a risky path to go down with future applications, to, to reverse the order of what's been the standard practice?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton, Councilwoman, the city does do this on commercial developments, it is, it's not a practice on single-family developments, that plat does need to be recorded first. Multifamily is a little bit of a hybrid, hybrid between the two, as more than one building can be constructed on a, on a lot, as is the same for commercial uses.
So, Madam Mayor?
Multifamily doesn't necessarily, excuse me if I may just further, multifamily doesn't necessarily, isn't required to be subdivided. Multifamily development can simply be on one parcel. This one's a little bit different, since they do have a single-family component to it, but they aren't planning to start the single family until the plat records.
So, without a recorded plat, there's no issues in verifying setbacks and, and where utilities or easements are, or anything like that, I'm just trying to think of what is the risk and what could be those downsides?
Yeah, certainly, yeah, Madam Mayor, they, they do have a final plat that has been approved. When the certificate of zoning compliance comes in for approval, staff will be reviewing all of those issues to make sure that everything is consistent with that final plat that has been approved.
Madam Mayor, if I can just build on that a little bit, a lot of the risk in this case is on the developer. If the construction crews put the foundation in the wrong spot, and it's too close to a future lot line, then that's something that they're going to have to rectify, or submit a new plat to, to correct that, because it will need to meet the appropriate setbacks for when those lot lines actually exist. So, most to all of the risk is actually on their side, but we're the bad guy when we get to tell them, hey, your concrete crew put this two feet, too close to this property line, so it's not typical, it's still not something we generally support, but as Sonya said, multifamily does have more of a commercial nature to their construction, and even their occupancy, and we're definitely more comfortable with a multifamily project moving forward before plat recordation than, than single-family homes.
It seems to me like we've had one where we've done something like that, they've been sold, and the new owners have not known that their apartment complex was not ready to make good on the leases and the move-ins, and of course, we were the bad people by not allowing them to move in, so is, is this going to be something that could happen in this one as well?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, I did talk to Bruce Farkleton a little bit about that scenario too, and that was a different scenario where that project had a main that was going through their site that wasn't up and ready. Here, you have a brand-new intersection, and all the utilities are right out in front of this property, so services aren't a problem as they were in that, in that situation there on, near the freeway. So, no, this isn't the same, same situation, again, we've, we've kind of gone through those scenarios of what potentially could go wrong doing this out of order, and in this case, we're, we're pretty comfortable with allowing it to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Mr. Burton.
I move we approve, wait a minute, this, no, I move we approve, it's Wednesday night, H 2017-0136, and to include what all staff recommendations.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9C. If there's no discussion by council, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried.
Madam Mayor, sorry.
Mr. Burton.
On this topic, and you've highlighted the, the findings, for lack of a better word, of, of the exceptions for taking certain things out of order, I think that's really helpful, if and when the next request like this comes, single-family, multifamily, or otherwise, that, that they want to do that out of order prior to plat, it'd be really helpful to, almost like a variance, to try and articulate why this is a unique exception that warrants deviating from the rule that, that we all support, that the final plat's got to get recorded first, so, because we're going to be asking, I think, to find those specific characteristics to warrant granting it, just so the applicants know going forward, there's going to need to be something unique to justify it.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton noted, I'm not sure how to go about that, I can work with the city attorney, since this doesn't have findings, this will be an order of approval, but.
I think it's probably just in your presentation, as you lay it out, we had this request, here are the steps we went through to analyze it, if it presented any risk, and...
Madam Mayor, what, I guess we're trying to capture is, so the applicants know on the very front end, here's its concerns that councils have, there's a policy, we do it this way, we're all supportive of that, so you're going to need to...
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, item 9D is a public hearing for H 2017-038. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. The next application before you is a request for a short plat. This site consists of 1.56 acres of land, it's owned LO, located at 4664 North Pengrove Way. The applicant is requesting a short plat consisting of three building lots on 1.56 acres of land in the LO zoning district. This is a re-subdivision of Lot 3, Block 45, Bridgetower Crossing, subdivision number 15. All of the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards of the district. No written testimony has been received on this application. Staff is recommending approval per the conditions in the staff report.
Okay, council, any questions for staff at this time?
Madam Mayor, one quick one. Sonya, there was reference in the packet about a sidewalk, is one perhaps unresolved issue, is that...
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Barton, council. The applicant has agreed to install that sidewalk, there, this one was a little bit different in the case that Pengrove, when it, when the plat was originally recorded, that was not a public street, therefore, the sidewalk wasn't required, nor was a buffer along Pengrove. Since that time, the, it has been dedicated as a public street, therefore, with this subdivision, there are subdivision improvements that now kick in based on that right-of-way that's adjacent to the site, so it does require a sidewalk and temporary buffer. The applicant is here to speak to that tonight.
Thank you, is the applicant here? Thank you for joining us, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Caleb Kenyon, address 16 12th Avenue South, Suite 112, in Nampa, Idaho, 83651.
Thank you.
I'm David Morehouse, 3536 West Ryder Cup, Meridian.
Thank you.
I am the civil engineer for, for the project, the project consists of, of, of a lot that's going to be split into three different lots for development of professional office buildings. We will be incorporating a new sewer and water main, there will be no new roads with the project, we will be using existing, existing entrances into the property, and there's been a cross-access easement to, to access that are different properties. The, the, the use of the property will not change, we're just simply looking to make, make the one existing lots into three smaller lots to, to help sell the properties.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions for the applicants?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Same question with regards to the sidewalk, it just appeared that there might be something unresolved with installation of a sidewalk, or is that...
We're, we're currently in the, in the process of updating plans, we are planning to install the sidewalk along Pengrove.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further questions from council? Anything further?
No, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that has signed up, Mr. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, the only other sign-ups were Jordan Morehouse in favor, not wishing to testify, and Chuck Van Damme with no indication on the project or indication of testimony.
Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this application? I see none.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Move that we close the public hearing on item H 2017-038.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
Move that we approve the short plat request on item H 2017-038 to include staff and applicant comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9D. Is there any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 9E is a public hearing on proposed fee updates for temporary use applications. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, by the time I finish speaking, I would be down at the podium, so with your indulgence, I might just present from here this evening. This is a follow-up to the temporary use ordinance that we just passed, making some updates to the temporary use code. We spoke three weeks ago about needing to follow that with some fee updates to coincide with what the ordinance suggests, so in front of you this evening, is that resolution for the, the fee updates? The only new fee is the $150, which is the large-scale special event, we're doing away with the citizens' use application, which is the roadway applications to coincide with ACHD, and we're rolling that into what is a special, a large-scale special event, we've had that before, but now we're removing one fee and adding the, that application process into the large-scale special event, so that is why you see a new fee of, of 150. So that is why you see a new fee of, of 150. And the other fees listed there, we're actually reducing, if you're in a park, if you're a regular scale, and so forth. So that is what you have in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the clerk? This is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Mr. Borton.
Move that we close the public hearing on item, on item 9E.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 9E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All eyes must carried. We have a resolution 17-2047.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve resolution number 17-2047.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9E. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item 10A is under Department of Reports. We have our fire department to talk about an update to our fireworks ordinance.
Madam Mayor and city council, I took, took over as the fire marshal in May, and, and what this update is, is a result of some training on fireworks display that we took this summer through the city Boise. What the city Boise implemented with their fireworks application is basically a checklist of things that they would like the company that's providing the fireworks to provide to the fire department. And all this is, is taking that checklist and, and putting it into our ordinance is what this is. In the checklist is, it's simple items like, you know, a, a more detailed plat, site plan of, of what we've been getting in the past. This, since I took over in May, this checklist that we got from Boise Fire that we have incorporated, I have been utilizing with all of our vendors for the Fourth of July. So the Speedway, they did it, Farmstead did it. I currently, I already got the list for our Christmas tree lighting festivity festivities, and the Village is doing fireworks on the 17th for their Christmas tree lighting as well. So all of them have already met the requirements of this ordinance. I've had a very good working relationship with the fireworks suppliers. So if you'd like, I can go through some of the highlights of the draft.
That would be awesome.
Okay. So in section G, there's a section in there that allows a window for appeal. If for some reason the, we deny their fireworks permit, there's an avenue for appeal in there. One of the big ones is item I-2, which adds a provision that will allow me as the, the fire marshal to revoke the fireworks permit in case of something dangerous, you know, high wind, red flag, warning, whatever. Most of the shooters that actually shoot the fireworks off are well aware of, of when they should and shouldn't be shooting off fireworks. In item 3, it talks about the court current ordinance requires description of prior experience. This for Bro's draft requires documentation that they actually meet the NFPA standards for a fireworks pyrotechnician. Item 6, we kind of talked about the site plan, so 6A through L talks about all the different site plan requests that I will be looking for to approve their fireworks permit. Item 7, basically just requests a detailed list of what they're actually shooting, to make sure that if they're shooting a three-inch mortar, that they've got the proper clearance for the fallout zones, when, so that the, what they're shooting matches with their site plan. On item 5A, or yeah, 5A clarifies that the discharge of dangerous fireworks requires a public fireworks display permit. 5B, we updated some NFPA document dates to current additions that are being utilized in the international fire code. Item C1 adds a requirement that the applicant provide information about the pyrotechnician operating the display, licenses, certifications, anything that they may have. What I typically get from the fireworks supplier is I get a resume of the shooter, the one that's actually shooting the show, and it shows all of their certifications, all their licensing, so that way we can make sure that they're actually know what they're doing. That's kind of the, the nutshell of, of what this draft ordinance brings forth. So if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
How, how long is our existing draft, or our existing field with regard to fireworks displays?
How long is it?
Yeah. Is this a huge addition, or?
No, like I said, the biggest, sorry, councilman, the, the largest section that got changed is, is 6 and 7, where we added just the, I call it the checklist, is what I've been giving those people, requesting, I need these items for your site plan, I need these items about your shooter. It's just, it's more information that we're requesting of the fireworks supplier. The rest of it hasn't really changed, all we're doing is changing dates on NFPA standards.
Madam Mayor, follow-up?
Mr. Palmer.
And have we checked with anybody who, any vendors of this, whoever does this work?
Yes.
Have we checked with them to, to get their opinions on, on the draft?
Yes. The, the draft itself, no.
On the changes?
Like I stated before, I started in May, so I, I had supplied this checklist to all of these people ahead of time, and everyone has been able to fulfill this list. There's really only two fireworks suppliers in the valley that we deal with. Fireworks America down in San Diego and the gentleman out of Oregon. And they have all given me everything that was on the list. And so I've taken that data, and now each year as we progress, all I will have to get is the newest, whatever they're shooting from that point, because they typically do the same shows every year. Thanks.
So basically, this doesn't change in practice what the operators of these fireworks shows have been providing the city, it just gives them something that they can check off and.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's usually what the, the last three I've gotten, they've taken my checklist, turned it into a list and said, here's this item, here's this item, and basically it's just a, a quick checklist of the items that I need to make an educated, you know, can we approve this permit or not?
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
So it might be a formality, but would you be able to submit this draft to those, those public fireworks providers, including anyone that might have utilized the Speedway in recent years, to provide a public fireworks display to get their comment?
I'd be more than happy to do that. We have, we have time.
Yeah.
We have time on our hands.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
Yeah. So I can, I can present that to them this next week and come back to council, you know, with the comments or whatever direction you'd like to go to, to get this into ordinance.
If you can have that for when we set it on for the next discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Items under future meeting topics. I know we just added one earlier.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
I don't know whether or not it's a topic. The first one, which I noted, which I think everyone noted, was some good comments we heard this morning about opportunities for the gathering public input from the neighborhood with regards to fire station locations. It's part of the decision-making process, so I think that's appreciated as a future meeting topic. Another one might be, it's, it's in relation to the school district and the, the opportunity for the school district and the city to participate and, and exchange information earlier on in, in certain development projects, well before it gets to council, to try and facilitate some communication between the district and the applicant, and the city can play some role to have that occur earlier on in the process.
I, I believe in, and I'll have to ask Caleb or, or Bill, they're invited to pre-op meetings or, so, do they regularly attend? No.
And there may be, and one of the, a good example, and this isn't, this is for a future meeting topic, obviously, but we've got, you know, a representative from ACHD here often, which is wonderful. It's perhaps costly to them, but it's a great benefit to us, and the earlier that those entities can communicate, and if, if it's not perhaps as effective as it could be, it'd be worth exploring why it might not be as effective as it could be, and maybe there's different ways to try and facilitate that communication earlier on. Because when it gets to council and we receive every now and then the, the letter that speaks to what the district's concern may be, growth is growth, I think there might be for us to discuss a more effective way to have that conversation earlier in the process.
Okay, we will put that on as a future topic to discuss.
Fair enough.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, thank you. For what it's worth, as one who spent considerable time knocking doors over the past few weeks, I happened to knock a couple of school board members' doors and had similar conversations to what Councilmember Borton had, had spoken directly to, and I know that there is a review process going on internally within that facility and that organization to perhaps be more proactive early on in that process, and perhaps as we continue our conversations on the city's side, we'll be meeting them who will have in conversations at the same time.
Anything else? Okay, item 12 is executive session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive session as Berito State Code 74206, 1F, 1J, 1A, and B.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All eyes.